And you said you had to get your laundry clean. Didn't want no one to hold you, what does that mean? And you said, ain't nothing gonna break my stride. Nobody gonna slow me down, oh no. I've got to keep on moving. Ain't nothing gonna break my stride. I'm running in a water's ground, oh no. I've got to keep on moving. You're on the road and now you're breaking down. The road behind was rocky, but now you're feeling okay. You look at me and you'll see your path. Is that the reason why you're running so fast? And she said, ain't nothing gonna break my stride. Nobody gonna slow me down, oh no. I've got to keep on moving. Ain't nothing gonna break my stride. I'm running in a water's ground, oh no. I've got to keep on moving. Never let another girl like you work me over. Never let another girl like you drag me under. If I meet another girl like you, I won't tell her. Never want another girl like you have to say, oh. Ain't nothing gonna break my stride. Nobody gonna slow me down, oh no, no. I've got to keep on moving. Ain't nothing gonna break my stride. I'm running in a water's ground, oh no. I've got to keep on moving. Ain't nothing gonna break my stride. Nobody gonna slow me down, oh no, no. I've got to keep on moving. Ain't nothing gonna break my stride. I'm running in a water's ground, oh no. I've got to keep on moving. Ain't nothing gonna break my stride. Nobody gonna slow me down, oh no. I've got to keep on moving. Ain't nothing gonna break my stride. I'm running in a water's ground, oh no. I've got to keep on moving.
I heard you crying loud. Off the way of the sound. She may have sent shit for that someone and it's been out of the ground. As you sit around feeling sorry for yourself. Well, don't get lonely now. And try your one and only. I'm just living for the moment, sneezing hard, but you're so tragic. So upset you've been thinking about this shit, man. No time to search the world around. Cause you know where I'll be found when I come around. I heard it all before. So done that to my door. I'm a loser and a user, so it's only now a user. To try and slide me down because I know you're right. So go do what you like. Make sure you're doing right. You may find out that yourself that there's nothing reserved in there. You can't go forcing something if it's just not right. No time to search the world around. Cause you know where I'll be found when I come around. No time to search the world around. Cause you know where I'll be found when I come around. When I come around. When I come around. When I come around. Oh, I feel the creatures creeping inside. Like leeches leaving me dry. Though they're gonna feel my pain. They fall to dust when they feel my flame. I see no warning signs. I gotta fight that beast inside. Oh, gonna take him right down till I'm dying out loud. I'm dying out loud. Oh, then I'm dying out loud. Gonna fight on till the end.
All right, we call the meeting to order. First, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number two is to approve the board meeting minutes from May 11th. We've all had those. Is there any corrections or discussion there? If there's not, we have a motion to approve as presented. I have a motion of second to approve those minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, approve the minutes for special board meeting from May 21st. Any correction or discussion there? We have a motion to approve as presented.
I move.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the special board meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number four, to approve the financial statement for May. Any discussion there? Have a motion to approve as presented.
I move.
Same.
I have a motion of second to approve the financial statement for May. All those in favor, which say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item five, superintendent's report.
First of all, I want to give a brief, very brief update on where we are as far as our response to COVID-19. We had a webinar with the Department of Ed Wednesday. And I think everybody was anticipating getting some clear direction, which we did not receive. Not default them, and they're working with the information they have. But we still don't have any specifics as far as recommendations for reopening school. I was on a panel with three other superintendents Wednesday afternoon. And the consensus is the same, is that we're all just kind of waiting. We're all thinking of different possibilities, different scenarios depending on what phase we're in come August. But at this time, we're still waiting. What I plan to do at the end of the month, first of July, we'll be sending out, hopefully we'll have more information from the state that'll craft this survey. But we'll be sending out a survey to all the parents in the district to kind of get their feel for, number one, are they planning on sending their kids to school if we do reopen school? Under what parameters would they be comfortable sending their kids to school? Understanding that between July 1 and the end of July, that could all change as well. But, so we're planning on doing that at the end of June. I gave you a document just now. This is, and some of you may be familiar with this. This is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the FF-CRA. This is an emergency act that will expire December 31st. And it gives direction for schools who are, or any FMLA-covered entity as far as how to address employee absences. Up to this point, we've just been kind of very flexible. And if we need something done, we'll call the person, say, are you comfortable coming in? If we're not, we'll figure out another way to do it. But as of July 1, we'll be implementing this protocol that guarantees at least two weeks of regular pay. If they have to be off under certain conditions. And those conditions are a self-quarant- a government self-quarantine order has had COVID-19 symptoms and is actively seeking treatment. Is caring for a family member, described in one of the, one or two. Is caring for a child whose school or daycare is closed for COVID-19 reasons. And you can see that there's different delineations of a pay structure there. I kind of gave an example at the bottom. I've already sent this up to the principals and we're going to be talking more about it over the next couple of weeks. But this is in line with FMLA and FF-CRA. FMLA and FF-CRA run concurrently with employee sick days. And the two weeks allowed under FF-CRA runs concurrently with FMLA. So just to give you an idea of what we're going to be talking about in the next couple of weeks, that's one of the, one of the changes that the state has provided for us to utilize as a guide moving forward through December 31st. Glad to answer any questions about that.
Football sports starting up, how's that looking?
We don't know yet. We've started, football's starting tomorrow. We've had open gyms of basketball, they've given us some specific guidance. With the football practices, they're going to be implementing social distancing. Wearing, the kids, the kids when they're not actively exercising, working out, they'll be wearing face masks, coaches' face masks. Going through some sanitation protocol in the weight room and on the equipment like the football. To date, we have not had any further direction as far as what football sports will look like.
If we have some parents out there scared as in their kids or anything like that, and kids aren't going to be punished for that, correct?
Correct. Now, we'll be using, that's a good question. We'll be utilizing blended learning as long as they want to maintain enrollment with Bologna. And that's one of the reasons for this survey, so we can plan ahead for that. So we'll be utilizing blended learning, where we'll have onsite instruction for those. For any parent who, for whatever reason, is uncomfortable, they'll be, they'll have online learning available to them. And we'll structure that as we get a better idea of what that might look like. For instance, example I've given before in talking about this is if, if we have thirty kids out of the fourth grade that the, that the, that parents have said, I'm not comfortable sending them, then we would dedicate a teacher to a classroom that's set up for online learning. And that would be that teacher's classroom. Now, I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, but that's one of the things we could do. They'll be, which is on your agenda, we have a resolution that I'm going to ask you to consider because between now and then, there's going to be more waivers as far as how we handle student attendance. And so we just kind of, we'll get those as we come.
Are there any updates on graduation?
Still planning on having it on July 11th, the A D M on the football field. That's what we're planning on doing right now.
Restrictions or any?
We're going to work on that. We'll probably do tickets to limit the number of people in stands. But, I mean, we haven't settled this yet. It's one of the things we're talking about. We'll have the graduates socially distance on the field in chairs. Both sides of the stands would be open. And then for any that don't have tickets, they can go outside the football field and stand wherever they're comfortable. And that's, that's how, you know, it's how I've seen schools do that before, they have outside graduations. Again, I always want to reemphasize that July 11th date depends on what the government says to us, so.
Anybody else? If not, we can move on to item B, a report from the city. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for letting me come up tonight. I appreciate Steve for stepping in. Couldn't do much farming tonight. Got a little bit of rain. Update you on where we're at. We had the bids open last week on the service rehabilitation project. Everything's coming in about forty percent under what we were estimating, which we're very pleased with right now. The first phase will be the intrusive water, which has been a pretty serious issue in the system. We hope to have that addressed here within the next three months. A company out of Rainforest got the contract. You will see them working here in the town in the next two months. They'll be running cameras and fixing areas where we've got intrusive water, which it is a big problem for the plant. We're, we're taking in about seventy-five percent of the water that we're actually getting paid for. So it doesn't take long to figure that out. The second part of the phase will probably start mid-August, which will be the new collection system and everything to the plant. And we hope to get phase three next year on the plant itself, on upgrading the plant. So everything seems to be going along well with that. We got the two bridges finished finally. We've got three left in the entire city, and we're working on those right now. We're being told there will be more grant money. We don't know that, but we're going to apply for those grants if they come available and finish that. We've still got some good housing starts going on. We're still bumping along, six to ten housing starts a month. It's really been impressive. And I see no reason for it to stop. The new road, if you've seen across some administration buildings, proceeding nicely. We should have that paid by the start of school. And we're also going to repay B Street. And we had a little bit of grant work that we were able to do on the senior citizens parking lot. I don't know if you haven't noticed, we've redone that and restructured it. And we're going to continue to work on that. We're still hearing a lot of interest on the corners down here at the bypass. And we had a meeting with one of the developers here about a month and a half ago. I do believe that project will go forward. There's been several projects here lately that have been stymied a little bit because of the COVID-19. The ability to meet with lenders and stuff, the one developer I visited with, they've had a rough time, you know, having meetings and getting the financing together with all the different limitations that have been going on. But I do believe that will proceed. And we've just been trying to get a lot of projects around. The lighting project for downtown on the sidewalk and the Turk Street project is still in the hopper. We've submitted our plans about three months ago to the Arkansas Highway Department. And we have to wait back for approval from them. We did get the extra hundred thousand from Metro Plan to tie in to that project. So we've got right at a million dollars on that project, which we're excited about. Turk Street, Turk Street will take about two years for everything to get done on it. But when everything's done, it'll, it'll be a nice road from the bypass into the city. Y'all have any questions or anything? Saying anything, like I said, anytime. Say something around, just talk. We're here to work with you.
Great. Thanks, Mayor.
Ken?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, Dr. Stevens, we had planned to redo the track this year. What's the status on that?
Well, actually, the plan to redo the track was next year. If you remember, we were going to do football this year and the track the following year. And we bumped up the football a year. So we're a year ahead of schedule. We are still hoping to do that, but to be honest with you, I'm, I just kind of went away and see how things turn out. I mean, it's still on the schedule for next year, which was, was, was originally planned on that being done. It's just a question about what our, what our financial situation is going to look like going forward with COVID-19.
Did we not have money already set for that?
We did, we have money in our building fund for that, yes. And we can, we can move ahead.
I'd love to see them move ahead. I think they deserve it.
That's the board's desire, we can move ahead. I've just had some folks express a little bit of concern about moving ahead now.
Anybody else? We'll move on to new business, item May's consideration of FY19 audit.
Yes, you all received a copy of the legislative audit for FY19. There were no findings, everything was good. And so our legal obligation is to accept the FY19 legislative audit as presented. And it's a public document.
I have a motion of second to approve the FY19 audit. Is there any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B, consideration of bids for on the elementary school security entrance.
Yeah, we have, you have with, in your packet, just the copy of all the bids we received for the Bologna security, elementary security vessel. Mike Armstrong's here to kind of walk through some of that, answer questions you have. And then we will be looking at the GMP for the project, which is a little over what we originally budgeted, planned for back in August of 2019. And I'll talk through some of those things that Mike, if you want to talk about the bid sheet.
Sure. So we received our drawings from Lewis on about May 1st. We advertised in the paper on Sunday, May 3rd and May 10th. And we bid it out on May 19th. We had forty-six bids over six packages, or six or seven packages. We had a, a good average and it's good participation, a good representation of the market. We put that together, we looked at the subs, scoped them out. You know, our original GMP that we prepared based off these numbers that we talked to Dr. Stevens about was about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But we had a lot of V E options, or value analysis options to cut that out. Cut, or save some money, I should say. We met with Dr. Stevens, an architect, over the last couple of weeks. Came up with some good options where you still get what you want. And we were able to save approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so what you got in front of you now is a new GMP for about three hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Some of our value analysis, we deleted the canopy system, which included foundation and lights. We changed the vessel entrance up just a little bit as part of appearance. The rest of the building is C M U. The original drawings had face brick on the insides, with the brick offs for the rest of the building. So it looks like the rest of the building. The transaction counter and the storefront are very similar to the, to the elementary school. So you get your bulk of this in class there.
So what was the E?
The canopy system, there was a canopy system that came out of the elementary school, but it had lights, it had brick, uh, foundations. So we gave a couple of options, you know, keep the canopy system, delete, delete the brick off of it. But I think ultimate decision was go ahead and get some of the, the add layer. The infrastructure there, if you want to add a back layer.
Was the canopy in between the two buildings?
Well, yes, but it didn't stretch all the way to, to.
Yeah, the, yeah, not the canopy in between the two buildings. A can, a canopy that would go from the new vessel entrance to the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk.
Yeah. Do you have a breakdown in general conditions?
I did. Not, not with me, but.
I mean, nearly fifteen percent, so it's a little higher than normal.
Well, it's a little bit size. So one of the things we were able to save on, when we bid out the canopy system, we were getting feedback from, from our canopy vendors that it was not going to be here before school started. So we allowed an extra couple of weeks for that to get in so we could install that. Because we took that out, we were able to reduce our general conditions just a little bit. But Tim, I'll be glad to show.
Yeah, but I mean, I'd just like to see how much administrative fees they are in it.
Sure.
And also, did we require y'all to have time at the performance model?
Yes, sir, it's required because you're a public defender. Yes, sir.
Can you explain on the guaranteed maximum price? There's several items on there that are listed with a price, but none of the bids were close to that low. Can you explain where going from a bid sheet to this maximum price, how this price gets much lower than the bids?
Yes, and so when we took our bids, we put that all together. And again, our original cost was a little over this, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars higher than that. So what we do is we sit down with the architect and the owner and say, hey, what are some options to help us get back to budget? We came up with a couple of ideas. We went back to our subcontractors that were, you know, the lowest responsible bidder on bid day. And so here, here's some changes that we'd like you to look in. So we were able to reduce costs that way. And again, the way our contract works is that, you know, if there's any savings, it goes back a hundred percent to the school. There's probably some of you guys have been a part of some of those projects before, so. And we have, you know, inside our price, we have a ten thousand dollar contingency to cover. You kind of did get these or opposed. So again, if that's not used, it goes back to the owner, to you guys, so.
A few things on this that I want to point out to you that are a change from the original plan. Not, well, not the original plan, but the plan that came back initially that was higher than anticipated. They had planned on putting electronic locking features on both sets of doors in the vessel. And we only need those on the inside doors, like at Frank Mitchell and at the middle school. The other item was that we're going to change is the original plan called for the brick pallisters around the fence post or decorative fencing. Were you going to eliminate that because that'll save us some money? That'll save us about, about twenty thousand dollars. And so that's, Mike, that's a decorative metal fencing line, is that correct?
That's correct.
But that also is a savings because we're not doing the canopy.
That's right.
So there's less, less there as well.
That's right.
And then the canopy, we still have the canopy that goes, connects the buildings and a canopy that goes all the way to the sidewalk for drop off and pickup. That stays the same. We just eliminated the cost of the canopy, which was thirty-one, thirty-two thousand dollars for right now. We can add that later, but because of traffic going in that door because of the times, we'll be much more minimal. I feel like that's something that we can cut for right now.
You know, the size of the vessel didn't change. The, you know, the sidewalk going out didn't change, so, and fence didn't change. So if we go back and add canopy, it'll look like it's always been that.
So what, if we go back and add a canopy, and it's never as cheap as it was, put it in right now? So is that something that, is it just decorative or did it serve a purpose?
Well, it served people, you know, being on a park there with a canopy and covering the building covered. And, you know, we can, we can, we can put it back in. Just the, the cost breakdown of that is, as I said, thirty-one, seven thirty-two. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to putting it back in. I'm just, I was just trying to get it down to be as kind of, I don't want to say bare bones, but.
What was our, what was our original construction budget that we?
Three hundred and, three hundred and five thousand dollars. Three oh five nine sixty-nine. And that was August of 2019.
I mean, is it something that we're really going to go back and do, or?
We can, I mean, I, 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 I don't think this is necessary, but, you know.
I mean, if it's something that we're going to go back and do next year or two years, we might as well do it now. But if it's, if it's not needed, then I say, leave it out, yeah.
I'm going to leave it up to the board because I'm good either way. But I mean, I would not, I can't tell you right now that the plan is next year to put it in there. So I'm, I'm good either way.
I'm probably going to leave it out then. It's probably not going to happen anyway. Okay, any other questions?
Then I would like to ask the board to approve the bids for Bologna Elementary School Security Entrance Project and the GMP as presented.
So I move. I have a motion of second to approve that project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, consideration of honor graduate policy revision.
You have a copy of this document in your packet. We have Ms. Sanders and Ms. Smith and Mr. Simmons that are here to present. They've been working, second semester actually, on revising our honor graduate policy and required credit. So I'm going to turn it over to you three and kind of explain your rationale and what it would look like. Okay. Ms. Sanders and Ms. Smith are going to help out a lot because they've looked at different school districts to see what they do on honors policies. We've had a lot of discussions about these over the years. A lot of things tied in with credits and, or number of credits and with the honor graduate policies. And we've looked at these off and on, trying to figure out what we needed to do because of some things that we run into. We run into students who come in from other school districts and they will move here. And then parents have to make decisions a lot of times between, do they go to Conway? Because it's closer to travel? Or do they come here? Or do they go to Greenbrier? And in some cases, not all cases, but in some, there have been some parents who have made the decision not to come here because we require twenty-eight credits for graduation. And the state only requires twenty-two. And the other schools around us require much less than we do. So we have the highest number of credits that are required for schools around here. And part of that is because when we added third period in to the four-by-four block, we had another opportunity.
And part of that is because when we added third period in to the four by four block, we had another opportunity for credit. So that gave us more credits, and we ended up with students who thought, well, I've already got all of my things that I need to graduate, why can't I just go ahead and graduate? So the number of credits has kind of bumped up as we've gone along. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to look at bringing the number of credits down, because we adjusted what we do in third period, so that it is no longer a credit that the students receive toward graduation. That's when we do our intervention and extension times. So that lowered the number of credits that students are able to get. And with that, we could have an issue where students could run into problems being able to get up to that twenty-eight for credits. So we would like to look at dropping that down to twenty-five from twenty-eight. And that's in here, that's on the back page that you saw there. And the other reason is because it makes us more competitive with the other school districts around us. If you have to have twenty-eight credits for the same diploma, some people are choosing to go different places because they don't see the benefit from the extra credits. As far as the honors go, right now, our required number of honors courses is twelve. I don't want to say the wrong thing yet. Our required number of honors courses is twelve, and we have several students who are really having to work hard to get up to that twelve by the time they graduate. So we looked around at some of the different ways that other schools do these, and I'm going to let these ladies tell you about that, because they're the ones that have worked on putting the proposal in the form that you see it here, taking some things from some of the different schools that we saw, that we liked, and we felt like fit with what we do here at Valonia. And I made some more posters on it about this, they talked about it, so you can see the high points of each one of these. So let you ladies go ahead.
As we researched this and talked to, like you said, the surrounding schools, and as I've gone through the years and been to different activities where other schools announce their honor grad, almost every school has a high honors, an distinguished honors, of different levels of honors. Ours never have. If our students did get twelve AP or concurrent or honors classes, and maintained a three-five-on-five point scale, then they just weren't honored. I had several students this year that had ten or eight AP concurrent honor classes, had straight A's all the way through, they still didn't get to be an honor grad. It's hard to get twelve honors classes when you're also trying to be a more well-rounded student in being like band, or athletics, or other things like that. It's very hard to get that many. So those students, I feel like we, we recognize students, they work just as hard, if not harder at sometimes. So we went through and we looked, and like District 12 was saying, the schools around us, Conway requires twenty-three credits for a graduate. Greenbrier requires twenty-four, I think Mayflower was twenty-two, and Mount Narnia then twenty-two or twenty-three. VB, twenty-two, and then Cabot, twenty-three. So, and I know why we did, because I've been here forever, and I started out when we were requiring, what, twenty-one, twenty maybe, as the first, when I was first counselor. So as we had the four by four, it increased. Then when we put that third period in, it increased. Then when we added more AP classes, we said, well, to keep the students here and make it where they're going to stay, and if they go to want to work, we'll add more honors classes, so they have to have it. Well, now that we've put this in and taken out that third period, plus the state is only allowing us to do a half credit for Algebra I and Algebra I and B, so they'll get one credit and take up two slots, geometry same way. So if a student had to take those, they're not going to be able to earn as many credits in a year. Then if they do acquire, that's a half credit each semester, so that's only one. If they go to Career Center, they lose two credits. So just depending on the different situations, a student might not be able to get twenty-eight credits. And I think I had, I look back, four students that moved in this year as seniors, that there was no way they could get twenty-eight credits to graduate. We do have a policy in there that said, if they move in, they could get a twenty-six and still graduate. So after all of that, and research follow-up, we come up with this plan that we submitted to make us more competitive with the other schools. And also, students that may never, on the way we got it right now, be an honor grad, if they have a four point oh or higher, this will take care of some of that. At that first level, the honors also include those students that might be a vocational completer, and still have some other things to do with that one thing. And I think you all had that in your packets, and you can find a C, we won't bring that to you. But it just goes down each level, to the highest level is distinguished. The second one is high honors. Does anyone have any questions, or any other?
Why, why twenty-five instead of, say, twenty-four, as far as graduating? That still puts us as the highest around, so, yeah, I just.
Right. Because we were just looking at our students still, if they stayed here all day and take A credits, they could earn A credits a semester, I mean, a year. And if they took Algebra and Physical Science in the eighth grade, you know, that would be even two more. But the majority of our students, I think, could get twenty-five. When I went back and counted, if they did the two-part math both times, they did choir every year, or did athletics, I think they still would be able to easily get those twenty-five. I mean, we could go to twenty-four, to make it a little bit more competitive.
I mean, is there a benefit of being twenty-five instead of twenty-four?
No, no, no.
Yeah, there is, there is a benefit. The benefit, I mean, there's not as far as them getting their diploma, but there's a benefit for us, because if the kids know that they only need twenty-two credits, and they've already gotten that, and these other classes they're taking, they don't really need those for those twenty-two credits, then we're going to have them more likely to just not do anything in those classes, and just say, I don't care, I'm not going to do anything in there.
But what about twenty-four? You said twenty-two. What's the benefit of being twenty-four instead of, or twenty-five instead of twenty-four?
I don't know that. I don't know the benefit of that for sure. I just know that we didn't want to go with just the bare minimum of what the state requires, just because they still, we still have the ability to make more credits than that. And most of our kids have no trouble getting there.
This year, I had some that had thirty-six, thirty-seven.
But it's the ones that move in, that haven't had all of those, that we looked at, that most of them are able to get. Because the ones that move in from other schools, and they're going to put them off of this variation in the policy with the twenty-five, then that's, that's something that they're always able to get to, you know, always be able to get there. So we just wanted to bring it down some, so it's more competitive, but there, I don't have a specific reason why twenty-five over twenty-four.
Well, at home, any of the point, you were just saying that we have some that have thirty-six and thirty-seven now. It's changed though, making an AP half credit, as you said earlier. So we're having to adjust accordingly. Because in the past, our students have gotten a credit for Algebra A and credit for Algebra B, credit for Geometry A, credit for Geometry B. Thus, we've now reduced it by half.
Is that, was that this year?
Yes.
So they had to have a credit for A and B this year?
Yes.
How many didn't graduate with twenty-eight this year?
Just the ones that moved in.
Just those four?
Mm-hmm.
But they had, they had the opportunity to have a credit for third period up until this year. This is the first year we've not done that.
Well, in some, like, when they say other classes are lost credit, they may make up those in great recovery, and make up number three in one period.
The other schools you compared to, they on a seven-period day, all of them?
Yes, yes.
So our kids can get another credit every year, and could get two every year. Is that right?
Well, they can get eight, unless they go to Career Center, or they're in that two-part math, or choir.
So our philosophy all along has been to educate the Valonia students to a higher degree than the surrounding neighbors, and not get them out early, but to give them a better preparatory education for college, or work, or career, or whatever they want to do, not, not do less.
Right.
So we've stayed with that philosophy. And so now, we want to drop it to twenty-four, twenty-five, what happens to those kids that already have thirty-six, or thirty-two, or thirty? What are they going to do? Are they going to be motivated to keep going and get that better education? Or are they going to be, going to slack up a little bit, or get out of here early or something?
I think, I don't know, this is my opinion, but I think we're going to see a whole different scenario with school this fall because of the way everything's going. You may end up having students that graduate early. We're seeing that more often in schools now than what we did. I don't have any answers for that, but I know that it's going to be different.
Well, again, one of the differences is going to be students who already have a one A, one B, Geometry one A and a B, that used to get four credits.
Right.
And now they're only getting two.
That's right.
So that's going to make it harder for those students to get the twenty-eight credits.
And they don't get that, I mean, I've looked to try to see if they were in that situation, where they could be.
Does the band get a credit each semester?
Band gets a credit for the band in the fall and a lab in the spring.
But they get, they get two credits?
And those, okay, those won't count the state credits, because they're four hundred of them. Choir doesn't have a lab in the spring, they just get a half a credit each semester, because they can only earn one credit for choir.
So what about some kid that's had sports all year long?
Well, those are, we can only count PE health, athletics has to count as above that twenty-two that the state requires.
Right. But they get a credit for it? I thought I read somewhere.
They can't count for GPA, but they do get a credit.
They get two credits?
Uh, depends. No, I think they all did this year, yeah.
Okay.
A lot of schools just put pass, I mean, give them a grade, which probably would make more sense.
So you felt if you stayed with the twenty-eight, that we'd be putting some more kids in the band, other than those four moving in since we had this year?
Exactly, like big times, and possibly sophomores this year.
And I think it also makes us more competitive with some of the districts around us, as far as the number of credits that we require. Especially, we were talking today about some of the ones that, you know, we do have some that move in from the Air Force Base that will be here, and they've been at schools all over the world, potentially. So when they come in, they may not have had the kind of setup that we've got on honors. Also, the same kind of thing, of, or some of the honors policies that they looked at, that it requires them to have, they had to have been in school for four semesters at that school, before you could be considered an honor graduate at that school.
Right.
So we were just looking at people that are coming into our district. We don't want to make this something that is so exclusive that people won't want to come into our district, because we geared our district only for the people that have always been here, or have been here for a long, long time, and not the rest of the people out there. Because it's, I mean, it's like if you can buy a vehicle, and you can buy it for this price here, and you can buy it for less money down the road, and it's the same vehicle. It's just one of those things that we've run into with it. And then with the credit issue that we've had to go, we talked about going from a full credit to half a credit for a while, but then the state came out and said, no, you got to do it now. So now we're having to do that, and put students into those, and they're only getting half credits. And then those types of changes have all, have just pushed us in this direction of, we want to bring this before you, and get your thoughts on it, to address some of those.
And the kids with high credits, do you see them slacken? I would tend to think, if they've worked that hard, they're probably going to be motivated enough to push on through and stay the same course. But you may say, well, maybe not.
You'd be surprised.
Just call.
You could think that, but we've had several that, I don't think that for any way, what difference does it make? It's only here your GPA, you're going to college, so.
Okay.
This year, we struggled a little bit with that, with the A and I stuff, when we went to that, especially for seniors. When we let them know, you can either take what you got for your third nine-weeks grade, and we can double that for your fourth nine-weeks grade, or if you're not pleased with your third nine-weeks, you can go ahead and work on that. And we had some seniors that were failing third nine-weeks, and they said, we're not, we're not going to do any more. And we let them all know, this is going to affect your GPA, it's going to bring your GPA down in a big way. Because we had some kids that did that in at least two of their four classes, maybe more.
And some of them were AP classes.
And it tanked their GPA, but they really didn't care at that point.
But they still had enough credit to graduate?
They still did have enough credit. And that was part of their decision, because they knew.
Right.
We had told all of them, we were very transparent with everybody, especially seniors, letting them know, you got the credit, you don't need this credit to graduate, but it is going to impact your GPA in a major way. And if they had credits, some of them, I don't talk to all of them, but there was a good number of them that just said, I'm not doing it anymore.
Out of the two hundred and thirty-five, it wasn't a big amount, but there were some that were really surprising.
So is colleges focused at credits when they give out scholarships and stuff?
That would give them GPA.
So that would give them incentive to give more credits?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And our ICT, most of the academic scholarships are based on ICT and GPA.
You said you had four that had trouble this year. How many new students to our district in high school move in roughly each year? After they get in high school, they don't change schools a whole lot, so.
We had seven.
Had seven?
And we had more than four seniors also.
Yeah.
Well, this year, seniors had an opportunity to get thirty-six credits, because they were over the A and I.
I've been a paper, done whatever you guys feel like is the best, but I also want to say, I don't want us to have the standard high of Valonia. We want our kids to get this foundational education that prepares them for the next level of whatever they want to do. And I'm not interested in being the minimum.
I agree, that's why we say just twenty-two. We just wanted to relax that number down from twenty-eight just a little to compensate for some of the changes that have come along with the way we have to award credits on those things.
Am I understanding you right to say that you only had four students that wouldn't have got twenty-eight? So would that mean we had a hundred percent graduation rate this year? Okay. Is, is graduation rate not a part of the S A metric that they use? So by us elevating our credits up, is that not shooting us in the foot when we're being judged by that graduation rate? Is this a self-inflicted wound, that we're not being compared apples to apples with schools around us?
It can be. This one, like, I can make of one this year that was the JAG, person JAG, that had, how many classes did that student lack? I mean, he was almost through.
Um, we just made it one, that was last year.
That was last year. I was saying that was this year. But he had one class.
He needed English twelve.
He just needed to finish it. I mean, he was already, he had been in it for a while, and just needed to finish it. And we tried and tried, the JAG teacher tried, all he had to do was.
Look for him at B branch.
So it was not an issue of that, it was just, he just was done, and he didn't want to come back and do it. And we even offered to let him do it from wherever he was, because he could log into the program from anywhere and do it. And he never did it. I mean, he's sitting there with less than a credit that he would have gotten made up, and he just quit.
It might have taken him two weeks.
But was he over twenty-two?
Yes.
No, pretty sure.
Yes, I thought you meant I.
So that's a student that the state says could graduate, but Valonia says could not.
Well, he didn't have English twelve.
He didn't have twelve for English.
That is a requirement through the state.
So that was part of it.
Right. If you had had that, then, oh.
But what are your thoughts on that? We're elevating our standards, and then our S A scores are being evaluated, our graduation rate. And, you know, when parents are picking schools to go to, they're looking at that report card. And if we're elevating our standards to say we want to educate further, and I agree with that. But I also think that we should consider the playing field being level with schools around us. So what are your thoughts on that?
I agree with you, that S A score is tied into a lot of things that we do. But we've had, we have, and we have had, a great graduation rate. But we've had, we have, and we have had a great graduation rate, and a great attendance rate. I mean, one that's the envy of most of the schools around us, because ours is so good. We, it's been really, really good. So I agree that this is one of those things that makes it more difficult for some to graduate, because they could be there, um, sooner if they didn't have these other things with electives. Like, for this student that I'm talking about, it may have been, I don't know, I have to look if I can see, but it may have been that if he wasn't having to focus on some of the electives he had to take, then he might have been able to put that time into the class that was required, one that was there that could have helped him. I don't know that for sure, but, um, that's a possibility. But yeah, I think that that's, I think that's one of the benefits of having the number set closer to where the state says it's required. That helps us to do better on our graduation rate, because we're not having to raise the bar even higher for our students. I agree with Mr. Sellers, what he said, um, and I say that all the time. We don't wanna be the state average. We don't wanna just be the school that's at the state average, because we know what average is mean, and we've seen some of the scores of schools around the state that are very, very low, and then those that are high that bring the average somewhere in there. And we don't wanna be just, just enough to get by, we wanna prepare. So that's why I, my thought is, I don't wanna be at the twenty-two, which is just the bare minimum. The state says you can't graduate students at this rate, but I think the twenty-eight is too high. I think that's got us in a place where we're disadvantaged, and it makes it harder on our kids for, um, no, I'm not gonna say no good reason, but for, it makes it harder on our kids to achieve something. And I think it hurts us by doing what you said for the S.A. score.
When you said the, uh, the kind of penalizes the vocational completer, how, what were you meaning by that? I mean, more well-rounded student? Do they not give us many credits for some of the classes that they take?
Yes.
Okay, is that what it is?
A vocational completer could be like an agrar, family and science business, engineering, medical professions, and they have to take three courses that are required in one of those areas to be a completer. And so with that first level, it just, that is an option, that if they take one foreign language, or, I mean, and want to, and be a completer, then they could still be an autocrat with these other, they need these other requirements.
Okay, but that, that would have any.
They might be an agrar, and show in, and wanna be a completer in that area, and not have space to take that Spanish too, or French too, or German too. But they could be a completer and that first foreign language and still be an autocrat, or on track.
Okay, so that deals with honors, not necessarily with credits?
Right.
Okay, okay, I got you, okay.
You may or may not have statistics on it, if you don't, I'd sneak your opinion. Traditionally, the more classes a kid takes in high school, the better they'll do in the A.C.T.
As far as the rigor of the classes, yes. And A.C.T., that's what the statistics do show.
So a person, a person that had thirty-six is more likely to have a higher score than the guy that had twenty-five?
Not always, I would say, but not for the rigor of the classes, the type of class they take. Because they could come in and take all electives over their four classes, and that wouldn't necessarily, you know, make their score better on the A.C.T. Now, maybe degreeing, which I don't really think about. The more rigorous classes in our school classes is where we want to see your increase. Well, if they don't take just the minimum math, and they take higher level math, then they should increase it. Our reading scores on the A.C.T. have been pretty good, and I'm telling you, we've had this junior class that will be seniors this next year, have some very high A.C.T. scores. We've got two that had W-sixes. A thirty-five, a four, a three, lots of thirties, or twos. We've had students that are really doing a good job.
Well, if, if twenty-four is the highest in our, in our area, can you explain again, why would we choose twenty-five? Why wouldn't we at least be equal to the highest in the area?
Because we have more opportunities for them to earn credits, they have a second period day.
But somebody coming in from outside, they're just gonna have to make more catch-up, and has potential of not graduating, so they would want to go to the school with twenty-four, where they could potentially graduate.
Possibly, but if they could earn twenty-four there with seven, they could earn twenty-five with us with eight. Because we can, they could earn eight credits a year unless they're in those two-part math. As a senior, they probably wouldn't be at that. We would hope they earn that.
Potentially maybe, but not if they're coming in the last year, or last semester, or something like that, who potentially not wanna graduate over one credit. I, I just don't see the reason of having twenty-five versus twenty-four. No one's really giving, giving a legitimate reason other than for better than they are, that's it.
Yeah. That, that's not a sticking point for me of twenty-five versus twenty-four. Our, our big push was, we're reducing the number of credits to students, that a lot of our students that were in that situation. And typically, the ones that are in those two-part math classes, can be students that struggle in some of their other classes too. So they may have some classes they have to retake or redo, which takes up another one of their slots for credit. So we had just looked at, we need to at least adjust for those couple of math classes, and then some of those that not be in choir, or something like that, they're only gonna get half credits instead of a full credit. So, yeah, our career centers, so we just thought, we're just looking at taking a few credits off of it, so that it would, uh, account for those, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm good with it, so I, I think we should go to the twenty-four. Yes, I, I believe we are a better school, but, you know, we gotta think, you know, what are we doing to drop it here a little bit better? And I, I think going to twenty-four, it's not saying we're, we're meeting the minimums, and, and we're not, uh, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot either at the same time.
So let me ask this question. The proposal, as it's written, would it, is there to be an amendment in the language to reflect going from twenty-five to twenty-four? I didn't see anything on the, the, the specified credits.
Yeah, it was just proposed to lower graduation credit from twenty-eight to twenty-five.
There's nothing that needs to change in this, though, to lower.
Oh, no, on the right, no.
Okay. So you have two, two proposals, honor grad proposal, and then a proposal, and then, uh, I'm gonna make a recommendation to change it to twenty-four. Are there any other questions, discussion?
And why are you doing that, sir?
Two, uh, most, two recommendations.
I was, I was, why are you changing it to twenty-four?
I thought that was a consensus, they wanted to change it to twenty-four.
It's not my consensus.
Well, I'm making a motion, and then, I, I have to make a motion either way, so.
I'm still good with twenty-five, unless Jolene said that we can get the eight credits a year compared to seven credits a year. So I mean, if kids like him, so even if he come in, into, like, his senior year, he still has the opportunity to get two credits more than he would at a normal school. Is that right?
Maybe, but, but if he's transferring from, from the airbase, or, or something like that, and they, they make, that one, that one may be that keeps him from graduating. You know, yes, he, he may have needed three, not two, you know, and, and that's, that's gonna keep the, the student from graduating. And there's, there's no point in having the twenty-five, to me, because, other than, there could not have been anything said to make it twenty-five that says, this, this makes it better, which is fine.
And I'm kinda concerned if, I mean, what, you're saying they have more opportunity, but does your, does your average parent that's moving in from out of state, do they know that? Or do they look at that and say, they're twenty-five, they're twenty-four, we're going over there? They're not gonna call us and research that before they just say, no, I'm going to Greenberg. So, yes, you can explain that, but I don't think you'll have the opportunity to explain that, because they're gonna choose someone else before they even ask. That's my concern.
Like, we come to red.
Right. That's, that's what I have, I think, point for.
Okay, I'd like, first of all, I'd like to recommend the board approve the proposed honor graduate policy as presented. Sir?
Our motion is second to approve the honor graduate policy. Anything else?
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
On this year's standard graduating class, how many of the distinguished, did you check to see how many of them had been distinguished?
No, not with this.
Okay.
But I believe I already had eleven that have four point overpower on the fourth answer.
Okay, okay.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I'd like to, uh, recommend that the board approve the proposal to lower graduation credits from twenty-eight to twenty-four.
Second. I have a motion of second to approve that recommendation. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Owe.
Motion carries. Um, item D is consideration of milk dairy supplier for FY twenty-one.
Every year, we have to approve, thank you, guys, very much. Every year, we approve, uh, a milk and dairy supplier for school food service. Kevin, uh, go through that process. So Kevin, if you wanna kind of walk them through what that process looks like, explain, uh, the rationale, we only have a one bidder, and just kind of walk them through that process.
In accordance with state law and school policy, we published bid requests, list-based requests. We had one person who responded, which was Swan Distributing, it's the same bidder that we currently have. And it's been, it's gonna be no increase in prices, was the same. There's really only, it's monopoly, Highland is really the only distributor in the whole state. And then there, I say that they're the only milk provider. They have independent distributors, which is what Swan Distributing is. And they assign the territory, so none of the distributors can cross over, and there's nobody else out there. Highland bought Turner years ago, and that's really probably, so that's why we're doing one. But the reason we do the bid process is because we got a five-year from our child, uh, nutrition on it. And they say you get bid, and we said there's only one bidder, and they said it doesn't matter, you got to bid. So that's why we're getting another bid. Well, probably do it next year, and I haven't talked to this whole one about it. Do a three or four-year bid, a three-year bid probably, that way we don't have to come back and do this all the time, and just do a three-year bid. Do you have any questions about that? But again, it's the same supplier that, uh, and again, I, I gave you a little more information, I think we went through this one time before. You can actually purchase it through Cisco, our food supplier, but then you have to go purchase your own milk cooler boxes, and they're provided free through the distributor. And then there's no new services, our people have to pick it up off the floor, they'll put them in there, rotate them stock, and our milk provider now is Swan Distributer. Anything goes out of date, it gets rid of it, so. Any other question, any questions?
Kind of like to recommend that the board, uh, approve the milk dairy supplier bid for FY twenty-one for Swan Distributer, Highland Dairy. Some more.
I have a motion of second to approve that recommendation. Is there any other discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item P, consideration of E-rate board resolution.
Again, this is another annual approval. Uh, as you know, we've received, uh, funding assistance for certain technology purchases through the E-rates program. Uh, we operate through Kellogg and Sovereign as our consulting firm for our E-rates paperwork. Uh, every year, the, we are required to pass a resolution, uh, which basically states that, um, that we will, we will, uh, pay our share. So if you look at the second page here, you have, uh, a total amount of purchases that qualify, uh, for E-rate, uh, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eight cents. E-rate will pay one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one, sixty-six cents. Our share was forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-fourty-two. And so, in signing this resolution, we say, we, we say we obligate ourselves to pay our portion of it. And again, I wanna emphasize that, uh, not everything we've purchased with technology qualifies for E-rate. So this number is just the items we've purchased that qualifies for E-rate funding. Uh, so, uh, those are the numbers that, uh, we are obligating to pay forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars out of the total cost of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, um, uh, through the E-rates. And so, are there, are there any questions about that? Okay, if there are no questions, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the E-rates board resolution for FY twenty-one. Some more.
I have a motion of second to approve that resolution. Is there any other discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, consideration of FY twenty-one technology budget.
Every year, uh, actually, every year, we do a refresh on one of our buildings. If you remember, this current year, we, uh, we halted that for a year. Uh, we're gonna start that cycle again with the freshman academy. Evan, do you wanna come up here and talk about the budget? That you have the, uh, overall budget, which is five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight ninety-nine. That's not out of the ordinary for this particular refresh. Some buildings are higher, some are more, or less, if you remember when we, two years ago, when we did the high school, it was significantly more than that. We are asking, and I'm gonna turn to you just a second, Evan, after any questions, but we're asking for the board to go, this will be in our board budget, but we're asking for the board to specifically approve this, because there are specific items that exceed the threshold of twenty thousand dollars that we need to get ordered before the final budget is approved. And Evan has listed those at the bottom of the page, for single bills totaling over twenty thousand dollars. So Evan, you need to add anything to that, or talk, or answer any questions?
Yes, as part of the summary page, you have the E-rates items are actually listed there in the district. I'm not, I'm not sure what, how that's broken down for you, on your papers there, but, uh, there's a, basically a page for each campus, including a district's page. But the summary includes the E-rate resolution that was just passed as well, so. But do you, do you have any specific questions about the, the budget?
And again, the reason why we're approving this now separate from the main budget is because there are certain items over twenty thousand that we need to get approval for, so we can go ahead and get those purchases, correct? And then place for school to start.
If we can't make some of those purchases, why do you have one item to arrive in time to have it in the classroom? And all of this is within our budget, we're just doing the stuff that's over twenty.
Yeah, some of the items are so, and that wouldn't have been an issue if we didn't need them before July first. So we, normally, we would just put all this in the budget, explain these things then, and have to do separately, because those items we have to get ordered to pay for, but July first.
Is this this year's, is it go to the this year's budget?
It'll be, uh, no, it'll be on the next year's budget, but we have to get per, permission to purchase it prior to July one. Anything over twenty thousand dollars requires board approval.
And what'd we spend last year?
Sorry?
What'd we spend last year on technology?
Uh, much less, if we didn't do a refresh on the freshman academy. I don't remember what the, what the amount was, it was just replacements and refurbishing.
I don't want to be exacting that, but again, last year, you did not do a building refresh, so we're back on the cycle. This year's freshman academy, so two years ago, the high school, it's not received because of that, and you said you're refreshing the cabin, that's small building, two sixty. But yes, this will be FY twenty-one's budget, so if, but in accordance with policy, the site rules, you personally decided twenty, we have to get it, and the students have to get it going by July, uh, get it going July first, and then get it sold before we sell it. And this will be out of jail, all of us, if I hadn't explicitly shown, we got a pretty good part of the launch.
How many years did this refresh last, Evan? I mean.
We, we've tried, we, we've had a difficulty, once the RV school's installed, they kind of threw off our cycle. We were on the five-year cycle.
Okay.
Now we're gonna go six.
Okay.
Uh, since we didn't refresh last year, we're technically kind of going on a seventh one. Elementary was skipped over back when it was their time, last time, we did get them these smart boards and not computers, so they're actually going along. these smart boards and not computers, so they're actually going along. So hopefully by going on freshman academy this year, we can kind of start phasing more things in the other campuses that would be...
If there are no other questions, I'd like to ask the board to approve the technology budget for FY21 as presented.
Second. I have a motion of second to approve that technology budget. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed. Motion carries. Item G, consideration of resolution for the suspension of district policy to align with emergency COVID-19 legislation statutory rule waivers.
Yes, so if you remember at a regular May meeting, we did a district resolution in regard to semester tests because of the COVID dismissal of school on March 13th. You know, we did not have a policy that specifically said we'll do semester tests, but we had a policy that indicated there would be semester tests. And so we passed a resolution that allowed us to not do that even though it's in policy. Well, after that, ASBA came up with this blanket policy, just based on the fact that there will be more waivers coming. There will probably be more temporary changes in statutes and school requirements, which would affect what we would normally do. And so what ASBA has recommended is that we approve this broad resolution for the suspension of district policy to align with emergency COVID-19 legislation and statutory rule waivers. It's not suspending district policy for anything other than something that can be directly tied back to a waiver or a suspension of rule or statute specifically related to COVID. And if you look on it, therefore be it resolved, item number one is what I shared with you in my board report about FMLA and paid sick leave. And then item two says all board policies and administrative procedures may be suspended in whole or in part to the extent that any policy or procedure of the district conflicts with new state and federal laws enacted relating to the COVID-19 pandemic or the waiver, suspension, or amendment of an existing state or federal law, federal regulations, or state rule made by the federal government, Governor Hutchinson, or a state agency in relation to COVID-19 pandemic. And so again, that specifies this resolution only covers suspending board policies that would come in conflict with anything related to COVID-19. And like I said, this, this is blanket, and I think it's a good idea because otherwise I'm afraid we're going to be doing resolutions all over the place. Any questions about that?
Item number three says that board requires superintendent to provide regular updates. I would assume that would be at least at the monthly meetings if something was changed?
Yeah, regular updates regarding changes made pursuant to this resolution. So just like we did in May, if we, if there was a waiver, like what we talked about earlier, a waiver or a suspension of a statute regarding student attendance, well, we have a specific policy that governs our student attendance. So then I report to the board and say, this one, our, our policy conflicts with the new waiver, and that would be the report. And so we would be keeping through our board member, board records, a record of any policies that we suspended in regard to COVID-19 suspension or waiver.
Anything else? Okay, recommend that?
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the resolution for the suspension of district policy to align with emergency COVID-19 legislation and statutory rule waivers.
Second. I have a motion of second to approve that recommendation. Is there anything else? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed. Motion carries. Item H, consideration of student...
I'm going to pass this down. Transfer resolution needs president, vice president, secretary.
Okay. Item H, go ahead.
Student transfer request. We had one student transfer request. This is a student that's been in our early childhood program that will be a kindergarten next year, currently lives in Conway, and they want him to continue at, at Bologna. The child has two older siblings that school choice into our district at, at other time, and the parent missed the deadline because they misunderstood that school choice has to be filed for each individual child. So I've already visited with Conway about it. They're going to put this on their board meeting. And so I'd like to ask the board to approve petition of transfer for Matthew Mitchell, parent Anna Mitchell from Conway to Bologna School District.
Second. I have a motion of second to approve that transfer request. All in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed. Motion carries. Item I, consideration of preliminary approval FY21 school choice transfer.
Okay, yes, this is our, this year's FY21 school choice request. If you, just as a matter of education or review, is when a school, when every year, parents have an opportunity to fill out school choice forms by May 1st is the deadline, with the exception of anyone that is transferring to our district that's in the military, they get extension of that. They can, there are two ways that it can be denied. A school district can deny acceptance of a school choice application if having that student come here would require us to hire additional staff or hire programs or build programs they don't currently have. The only legal basis that we could deny a school choice into our district, the only legal basis that a school choice, the resident district can deny transferring out, for instance, if we have some Bologna students that wants a school choice to Conway, the only way we can stop that from happening is to document that our school choice out of our district exceeds 3% of our enrollment, which is, we never have that many transferring out. So, so these are just the students that want to transfer into our district. I'm required to submit to these parents preliminary approval, just based on their application. I have to send that out to them before July 1st. It's preliminary because after we receive their records, if, in reviewing their records, it is apparent that we have to add a program or add a staff person that isn't already there, then we can deny it. So there really is no, at this point, legal basis for not approving all of these. It's just preliminary contingent upon receiving their records.
So these are the ones...
These are the ones wanting to come to Bologna. Yeah, the, the other school districts will have to approve any Bologna kids that want to transfer there.
Do we have a list of ones leaving?
Yeah, I do have. I can give that to you.
Yep.
It doesn't require the board action or...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I can give that to you.
Okay.
Yeah, so if there are no other questions, I'd like to ask the board to provide preliminary approval to the FY21 school choice transfers into the Bologna School District.
Someone, second.
All right, we have a motion of second for approve that recommendation. Anything else? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed. Motion carries. Item J is personnel. I believe we do need to go to executive session for the purpose of considering employment. So we will take a short recess and reconvene in fact.